June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, Hightower Township's hearing board. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we acknowledge that we have it for him tonight of members of the hearing board. Regarding the minutes, I want to let you go.
We do have the minutes. For the previous two meetings or hearings that we had, but one of them was a continuance. So apparently the meetings have to be combined and they'll have to be retyped and we'll approve them at the next hearing. Is that satisfactory?
Jay, do we need a motion to table?
Do we need a motion?
Uh, no, I think you're just noting that it'll be tabled for the next hearing.
Okay.
It's on the record, so.
Okay, sounds good. I'll read Chris, the review of the case.
The applicant, Robert McCary Meeks, seek a special exception to operate commercial daycare as a second principal use within their existing home. Located in our rural resource area agricultural zoning district. Section five point one B one permits commercial daycare facilities by special exception within the rural resource area agricultural district. Section seven thirteen B one permits more than one principal use on a property if it is located within the same building. The applicant state they will meet all applicable special criteria set forth in section eight point four N. Proposed commercial daycare facility, I'm sorry, proposed commercial daycare will expand the existing family daycare accessory use to include between seven to ten students and will meet all applicable regulations. Even though commercial daycare could allow twelve students, applicants agree to cap the maximum number of students at ten. They are requesting, Robert McCary Meeks, Early Explorers Preschool are requesting a special exception to the Hightower Township zoning ordinance. Ordinance eleven four, part five, rural resource area, section five point run, five point one agricultural district. Be permitted uses, three non-residential uses, daycare, commercial. Alternatively, and the alternative, if the zoning board interprets the ordinance in such a way that the commercial daycare is not permitted as a second primary use within the same building, the applicant seek a variance from section two point two daycare definitions to permit the existing accessory family daycare to expand to include up to a maximum of ten students. The current maximum of the existing family daycare is six students. Because the existing accessory family daycare is a permitted use and the advocate seek only to vary the number of students allowed, this is essentially a dimensional type variance rather than a variance for a use which is not permitted. Advocates are requesting a small expansion of the existing daycare and a proposed maximum number of students, of ten students is less than allowed for a full commercial daycare under the ordinance definitions. Nothing in the Pennsylvania Department of Public Welfare Regulations would prevent the applicants from operating the daycare as proposed. Would you like me to roll into the facts?
Sure.
Of the case? Okay. The preliminary facts of the case for the special exception, as far as the zoning officer goes, commercial daycare is a permitted use in the rural resource area agricultural zoning district with a special exception. However, part two of the ordinance regarding daycare commercial specifically states in part that in no case shall a commercial daycare be considered as an accessory use to an individual dwelling unit. The applicants are requesting to list the commercial daycare as a second principal use within the same building as the existing residence. A second principal use is permitted, however, one of the two principal uses would be, would need to be considered as the primary, which would obviously need to be the residence, making the daycare considered as the secondary. As far as the facts for the variance, the alternative variance. An accessory daycare is defined in the ordinance, part two point two, as an accessory use to a dwelling whereby care and supervision is offered to no more than six non-residents of the site during any calendar day. The applicants currently operate an accessory daycare in compliance with this ordinance. An accessory daycare does not need zoning approval. The applicants are requesting a variance to this definition to allow no more than ten non-residents of the site in a calendar day. For an in-home daycare, Pennsylvania allows the care of four to twelve children for less than twenty-four hours. However, it is important to note that the primary use of the home must be as a private residence and the daycare services should be secondary, which is currently what is used as.
You good?
Yes.
Okay. Who is testifying tonight? Anyone in the room is welcome to, if you plan to, please raise your hand and you'll be sworn in.
I won't be giving testimony, I'm representing.
Okay.
I'm going to be making a comment.
Sure, no problem, but if you are, please stand up.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth will be God or affirmed?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
So before you speak, state your name and address.
Okay, floor is yours.
My name is John Elliott, I'm the attorney representing Mr. and Mrs. Meeks. I'm with the law firm of Green Car Markey, Bullishen and Hunter. First we'll have Mr. Meeks testify. How do you normally do, do you have a stand up here in front of you?
Very informal, you can do it from your seat.
Do you want to maybe sit in the front so there's no obstruction? Mr. Meeks, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Rob Meeks, sixty-one twenty-five Gardner Road.
And you are obviously the applicant in this matter and you've signed and provided the application materials that have been presented to the township.
Yes.
Tell us about how the, how your property is currently used.
Right now, we, my wife runs the preschool out of our basement, Monday through Friday, six, seven o'clock to five o'clock, roughly those hours.
Okay, and how long have you been, and this is also your, you're also using the, this as your primary residence as well?
Correct.
How long have you been operating the daycare?
Uh, I believe this August will be two years.
Okay, and how many, how many students do you have?
We have six.
And the, as the zoning officer indicated, you're basically asking to increase the number of students you have to tens, up to ten students.
Up to ten, correct.
Obviously, we have two alternative legal theories which we believe could, you know, support that. However, in either event, basically what you want to do is have up to ten students and operate the way you are now, correct?
That's correct.
If you are able to have, and if the zoning board approves the additional students, does that impact how the state views your daycare for licensing purposes?
My wife could answer that better, but I believe she, she's just got to do an online course, which she's already done, but everything else would basically stay the same.
Right, so you, and as my understanding, I think your, the application indicated under Pennsylvania licensing requirements, you could have up to twelve students based on the space available.
That's correct, yes.
But you, you are willing to stipulate to a condition that would limit the maximum number of students to ten?
That's correct.
Want to talk about, currently, in terms of how things operate now, is there, there an outdoor play area? How does that work?
Yeah, there's a, there, once again, my wife could probably speak better to that, but there is an outdoor play area, it's a hundred percent fenced in. There's two shade pits that we've made with shade canopies over top of them, we have a smaller shade tree, natural shade tree. And she's usually out there for a couple hours a day, depending on how hot, like with this heat wave that we've had, they're, they're out there less, but they've been doing a lot of water play with the, but it's, it's all a hundred percent fenced in.
Okay, and how are the students dropped off and picked up?
They're usually started being dropped off from anywhere from six-thirty to eight-thirty in the morning, randomly, one at a time, and then the same thing with pickup is usually starts about two-thirty, and I think the last child leaves around five.
Now, you've attached a drawing that depicts the cul-de-sac.
Yes.
And can you indicate here for the board where your property is located?
Our property is right there.
Okay, this is the one that's labeled partial number seven, correct, okay. And it looks like there is a driveway mark, is that the location?
Yes.
About how, about how big is that?
I would say it's roughly two hundred foot long. And it, as, at the end of it, it goes to two cars for about the last fifty feet.
So there's plenty of room for any parents dropping off?
Yeah, the majority can pull right down the driveway, yes.
Okay, so they don't, they don't need to be in the cul-de-sac at that point?
No.
We have a few exhibits. We want to provide. I'll hand. I'll hand several of these.
Would you like to get those marked?
Yeah, we can mark, it'll be one through four that I'm handing out initially. Or excuse me, one through five. One, two, stenographer. This one is number one.
Well, I just want to make sure we mark, for the, for the record, we indicate which one is which for, I mean, we can mark them ourselves, but the applicant will just need to tell us which ones he wants to be numbered.
The first, what we'll mark is exhibit one is a letter from Small World Daycare, signed by Barbara Myers. Could you just briefly summarize what that letter was?
Uh, that was, that was directed towards my wife and, and the preschool, my wife had worked for her before she, we opened up our own business. And basically the letters, I believe, is stipulating that there is a preschool shortage in the state of Pennsylvania. There's not enough placements for children, and I, I believe that's basically what the letter is saying. Is that there's, there's not enough places for kids to get preschool in the states, and especially in Spring Grove here.
What we'll mark is number two, three, and four are three documents labeled neighborhood acknowledgement form. First one, signed by, well, here, can you tell me who, for each of these, what is the purpose of that?
Well, this, I went to my immediate neighbor.
Before you do that, correct, just tell me which one is two, three, and four.
Okay, two is the one with Matthew Gilde, is that how I pronounced it?
I believe so, yeah.
Number three is the one signed by Aaron Longnecker. Number four is the one signed by Dan and Lori Miller.
Thank you.
These are basically my, my closest neighbors right and left of me and directly across the street from me. Basically acknowledging that there's never been issues with parking, streets, you know, no traffic jams, you know, there's, there's no issues with, with, with any of that, and they're all aware that we're trying to go for four more children and they're, they're all, no problems with it.
You've told all of them that you want to add four more students?
That's correct.
None of them have any objections?
None of them have any objections.
And these are your closest?
Yeah.
And just to confirm, can you point out the parcel, if you can see those on the map, what parcels they would have?
I believe it would be eight, and I don't, I can't see what this one is.
Like that six B?
And then this one.
The one below that?
Yeah. I didn't bring my bowl.
And the next one, yeah, we had a, this will be number five. It's a handwritten letter dated March ten, twenty twenty-five. Can you just very, without reading the entire thing, summarize who's that from and what the.
I'm not familiar with this, let my wife.
Oh, is that, I'll wait.
Yeah, my wife would have to familiar with that.
Okay, I'll, I'll have her testify to that in a moment.
She's here, that right?
I am here, I'll read it.
Okay. Okay, yeah, we could, well, we'll do, we'll stick to one witness at a time, but yeah, you can come in after.
John, I'm missing number forty, you have an extra one now?
I think, yeah.
Thank you.
We also have two emails that I'd like to present. This would be number six, I will leave. And then a second email would be number seven. All right, what we've marked as number six and seven are, appear to be emails from Catherine Morris to K L M four oh six nine one at AOL dot com, is that you or your wife's?
That's my wife's email.
Okay, and what are the, just what, briefly summarize, what are these, what do these emails say, what's the purpose of that?
My wife would have to answer that, I don't have my glasses in.
Okay, I'll ask her when she, when she testifies. All right, as I, I indicated, we have two alternative legal theories. I want to first go through special, the special exception requirements for a commercial daycare in the event that the board would consider this under that, that's under section seven, fourteen, N, daycare commercial. Number one is traffic flow, and ingress egress shall not cause traffic hazards on adjacent streets.
John, excuse me, I'm sorry, Jay. Can we ask John questions, Ronnie's talking, or should we wait until the end?
Probably better just to wait, I don't think he'll be too long-winded, so.
I, I don't, I mean, if, I don't mind if there's something I said that you want clarification on, I don't mind.
It's up to you, Mr. Chairman, I'm just saying, the flow would go more smoothly, I think you could just present what you want to present and then we can ask questions.
Okay. So, first, specific criteria for a special exception for commercial daycare would be traffic flow, and ingress egress shall not cause traffic hazards on adjacent streets. We believe you've complied with that?
That's correct, yes.
All right, are there, I think you've already indicated, any traffic flow goes onto your driveway?
Yes.
It's drop, the drop-off pickup happens off-street?
Off, off-street, and we live at the end of a cul-de-sac, so there's no through traffic.
Okay, number two, an outdoor play area for children shall be provided, and you have one existing. Two A says off-street parking lots areas shall not be used as outdoor play areas. Your play area is not a parking lot, correct?
No.
Outdoor play areas shall not be located between the principal building and the public street right-of-way.
No.
It's not located there. All outdoor play areas must provide a means of shade, such as shade trees or pavilions, do you have that?
Yes.
Any vegetation materials located within the play area shall be of non-harmful type. Do you, do you have any, are there any trees or bushes?
There's just one maple tree, small maple tree.
And obviously that's not poisonous?
No.
Additionally, outdoor play areas shall be located at least twenty-five feet from budding property in the DGAR, DJMR zoning districts or existing residential use and screened in accordance with part seven, the ordinance, along with a fence at least four feet high. Is it, are you located at least twenty-five feet from any budding property? And is this, and you've already indicated, I believe, that the play area is fenced?
Yeah, it's all fenced in, yeah, with two locking gates.
The outdoor play areas shall be limited to use between eight AM and eight PM, are you in compliance with that?
Yes.
What, is there a time period where the outdoor play area is typically used?
I would say typically it's between three and four, and then probably between ten-thirty and twelve. That's usually the play area time, depending on the weather.
No part of a child daycare property shall be located within a thousand feet of a property containing an adult-related facility, is that?
Yeah.
You're in compliance with that one? Off-street parking areas shall be provided in a range so that persons, children do not have to cross streets or adjacent, on or adjacent to the site, I think we've already indicated, no children have to cross the street. Number five, primary passenger drop-off and pick-off areas should be provided on-site in range so that passengers do not have to cross traffic lanes on an adjacent to the site. And that, that's true, that no one has to do that. And passenger drop-off and pick-up areas shall be located in a manner that minimizes detrimental traffic impacts, both pedestrian and vehicle, on the sounding neighborhood. Is there, as we've said, that occur, drop-off and pick-up occurs on your driveway off the street, correct? So you do, don't currently cause any traffic congestion? Six, enrollment shall be defined as the largest number of persons or children under daycare supervision at any one time during a seven-day period. And you've indicated that, you know, the enrollment you are seeking is a maximum of ten students.
That's correct.
Seven, all users must comply with township, building, health, safety, property, and other applicable local, county, state, federal code license requirements. All such licenses, licenses, certificates, and permits shall have been obtained and presented to the township or shall be commissioned with approval. And you, for your existing daycare, you already have them?
Yes, correct.
And, and as far as you know, you would not need, in terms of your current facility, you wouldn't need any additional building permits?
No, no.
Attorney Elliott, I, I think you referred to this as section seven, but it's actually section eight point four N that you were just.
Oh, excuse me, you're, you're correct, apologize.
Just to clarify for the record, that was eight point four N that you were reviewing with the applicant?
Thank you. Alternatively, we're, we're also seeking a variance to the number of students allowed in your current family daycare. One of the bases we're requesting is that this would be what's called a de minimis variance. Under that theory, a variance can be granted even if the strict requirements for a use variance would not be met, where the variation requested is minor and rigid compliance, and it's not necessary to protect the public policy concerns of the ordinance. Do you believe there will be any meaningful impact on the neighborhood if four more students are allowed?
No.
Within the daycare?
No.
What, do, would there be any impact at all in your opinion?
In my opinion, there would be no impact.
And you have, you've already indicated that your, all of your immediate neighbors have been informed of this and have no objection?
That's correct, yes.
So are there any, so in your opinion, there would be no public policy concerns to be addressed? You know, the purpose of the ordinance would be met, and there would be no negative impact at all?
There'd be no, there'd be no, you wouldn't even notice that we went from six kids to ten kids. I mean, most people, I'm sure in our neighborhood, don't, don't even know we run a preschool. If you would pull ones up, not near you, they might not even know what we're doing here.
Okay, that's all the questions I have for Mr. Meeks. I know, or may have a question for, or, or hang on, they may have questions for you, or if there's anything. I was talking about, if you want to clarify, we're happy to hit questions.
So your, your last statement there, John, you were referencing the, the variance request for accessory daycare, I believe?
For the family daycare which, which they have existed, correct.
So, from your perspective, and, and also from the state licensing, what's, what's the difference for you guys to be a commercial daycare with a limit of ten kids or an accessory daycare with a limit of ten kids? What's the difference?
My understanding, that from the state licensing perspective, there's no difference at all. They currently could, from their perspective, they could have twelve students based on the amount of space that they have now.
Right.
The, the, this is more of a local zoning issue, how, you know, the, the board of supervisors deemed the distinction between a family daycare and a commercial.
And you can, Carrie, you can have up to ten with one caregiver, right?
Right, the ratio is one to ten.
Is that why, is that why you've chosen ten?
That's, yes.
Okay. Can I ask, can I talk to Carrie?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Okay. So, what is, so what is the difference between you having a commercial daycare with ten or an accessory daycare with ten? Is there any difference?
I don't believe so, but I did want to go back to what you had asked, what the difference was between family and group, like what the state might want more from us. One of the differences actually with the group is that they want liability insurance, which we already purchased with the six, just to cover ourselves with six children. But they do require you to have liability insurance. As far as the twelve, I don't think there's any difference, except that I would need another teacher to.
But you're okay with ten?
I'm okay with ten.
So the reason I was asking it that way, it sounds like you might have some different things to deal with at the state, whether you call it family or accessory, but accessory daycare is permitted. You, you need no approval from us for accessory daycare for six kids. To go to ten, you would need
Right.
a de minimis variance, essentially what John's saying. To do ten in a commercial daycare by this, by the special exception route, then we get into the argument over two principal uses versus one being primary, one being accessory. And we get into a position of approving, potentially setting a precedent for commercial daycare, which is the issue. So, that's why I'm asking.
From our perspective, it, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
If, if you believe we meet the requirements for variance to increase it, that, from our perspective, that's perfectly fine.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. I'm curious, the, so, and I might need Jay's help here. So we, we denied the request previously for a special exception for commercial daycare based on what's pretty clear in our ordinance, are you asking us something different now?
I believe so, I don't, my understanding, obviously I want to hear that the Meeks did not specifically articulate the argument that, under the definition, there, there's potentially two principal uses allowed if it's contained within the same building. And I, I realize, you know, there was some statement about the definition saying you can't have a commercial daycare as an exception. you can't have a commercial daycare as an accessory to a residence. But I would, our argument is, we're not, in that argument, we're not seeking an accessory. It would be two principal uses. The way that's written, it wouldn't allow a separate building to be an accessory, but since they are, would be doing it within the same building, that that would be allowed. And to the extent that there's any ambiguity or that, you know, reasonable people could come up with multiple interpretations, the law requires that it be construed in favor of the landowner with the most expansive use and the least restriction use. So I think, my understanding is that argument was not articulated. So in that respect, it's different than what was previously presented and denied. Now, of course, if you start first with a variance and grant it, and grant it under that theory, you know, the, the secondary argument of it being a commercial special exception is essentially moot point. You don't need to reach that, that decision if you go down that route.
Well, and here's where I'll need Jay's help, but I do, I think, I think we understood what Rob and Carrie were asking for the last time. And our ordinance in seven thirteen does say, in other than the ag, an ag operation, you can have two principal uses, but they must be in the same building. But our ordinance then defines use for principal as the primary use and any other use as accessory to it. And then when you go to definition of commercial daycare, and I think it's pretty obvious why, it says in no case shall a commercial daycare be considered an accessory used to an individual dwelling unit. You can have other dual principal uses with one primary and one accessory. But in this case, a commercial daycare could have a hundred kids. So if we approve a commercial daycare with a limit of ten, that would open the door, I would think, for that argument. If there's no need, which I think I'm hearing you say, there's no need, but if you can have ten, whether it's commercial or accessory daycare, you have solved your issue, right?
Absolutely. I mean, from our, yeah, from our perspective, it doesn't matter which theory you would approve. You know, you know, we wanted to put that argument on the record. And I would indicate, you know, obviously, these are taken on a case-by-case basis. So I don't think you'd legally be setting a precedent in the, in the sense that someone else says, well, you, you proved it for them, so you have to prove it for us, because they are, you know, legally, they're each a deep situation. But, just to address that, but yeah, if, if, I, I think, if we're approved under the variance, then it's certainly easier, you don't have to deal with the secondary issue that, that becomes moot.
Gotcha. So my question for you then, Jay, help me out here. From my perspective, it seems to me we already took action in November of twenty-three on the question of a special exception for commercial daycare with ten kids. Are, are we able tonight to just take action on the variance request for the accessory daycare? Or do we have to act on both?
No, no, you don't, you don't have to act on both. You, you could, for example, not saying you should do this, you could deny the request for the special exception for the similar reasons you denied the first time. Again, I'm just not saying that's what you should do, but that's an option. And then say, okay, they've presented an alternative theory. And on that theory, we agree that it's merited and, and you could grant on, grant the variance on that basis.
Gotcha. Yeah, I, this is me, I want to hear from Gene and Alvin too, but from my perspective, I think we already, we already took action on that. So to me, the action needed tonight is the request to do accessory daycare up to ten. What do you, what do you guys agree?
Yeah, that makes sense.
I agree with that. And, and then my question, when I read the requirements for variance, and John, I think you touched on this, there's, there's always the difficulty in proving hardship. Did you speak to that at all?
Yeah, well, with a de minimis variance, you don't need to prove a hardship. The, the legal theory is, it is, if you determine that it's a minor change that doesn't have any negative impact on the neighborhood or the zone, that can be granted without needing to show a, without needing to show a hardship. Secondarily, and I was going to touch on this in my closing comments, but we may as well address it now since you've asked. Since we're essentially asking for a dimensional variance under the Hertzberg standard, which you've probably heard and dealt with before, there's a lesser standard and that allows you to consider alternate forms of potential hardship or basis to grant that, such as economic factors or, uh, here, I think specifically the characteristics of the neighborhood and where, um, you know, this is providing a benefit in a landscape where there's perhaps a shortage of daycare. You know, the, the immediate neighbors don't object, behind them, it's wooded area where there's, where's no one behind them to be impacted. It's at the end of a cul-de-sac, there's, there's no traffic issues, nobody's crossing any streets, you know. But for the issue of, um, you know, whether it's, you know, two principal uses in a, uh, in a residence or not, they otherwise meet those other special exception criteria for a commercial daycare, which are, which are a harder standard than permitted use for, uh, for the family.
Well, and we're also aware that there are other ordinances in our area that allow ten in accessory daycare. That's a conversation for another time with our board of supervisors, but I, I assume that's from, because of the fact that the state allows you to go up to ten with one caregiver, so.
I would presume so, okay.
And you have to change your license at all, Carrie, in order to go to ten?
I have to resubmit my application and start over.
Okay. All right, anything from you guys?
No question.
Anybody else who's testifying then?
No, I, I would have just Carrie briefly confirm our other exhibits since Mr. Meeks wasn't really able to, to speak to those. Could you just confirm these three exhibits? These are the emails from.
Catherine Morris.
Right, from Catherine Morris.
She's my licensed representative. Um, I had asked her if you guys were going to cap me at ten. Was there a problem with me still going for the group daycare license? You know, because I, I didn't know if she could just stop it at ten, you know, or if she had to say it was through twelve. So I wanted to make sure that she could cap it at ten. She said that's absolutely fine. She said, actually, I might not even be able to do ten. It depends on my square footage, which we did the square footage of, you know, it should be fine. But, um, so that's just an email confirming that she would also cap it at ten. Um, and then the second one, I had asked, um, Barb Green. She helps, um, daycare owners get their home prepared for the licensed lady to come out, to make sure that you're up to all standards. But she also, you know, helps with information. She was going to try to be here, but she couldn't, just to speak on the daycare desert of Pennsylvania. And as well as, I had asked her how many daycares are in Heidelberg Township. They're the same two since like nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety, and there hasn't been any others. So, you know, the one right down the street I know was, I guess grandfather did before the zoning changed. But, you know, there's that one that's been open and I don't know. I know a couple have come and gone from what I hear from some people that have lived here a longer time than I have. But it's not like a bunch of preschools are popping up in the neighborhood.
How many kids are in the one down the street?
She can have up to twelve, she has two.
Yeah, she has, I think, two, two teachers.
Yeah, that happens.
Gotcha. So John, reading from the, the, the standards for variance, the, we have letters from all the adjoining neighbors.
Correct.
Right, and so, um, that this, a variance is authorized will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or district in which the property is located.
I believe that's absolutely true and based on his testimony. There wouldn't, they're already conducting it with six students, the way they're set up.
Right.
And the, the nature of the location, it's, I think, virtually impossible that anyone's going to notice that they're up to four more.
And this variance will represent the minimum variance that will afford really?
Yes, and that, that's why they've agreed to, to cap it at ten, it's, it's less than they would be able to do in their commercial setting. And it's, and it's consistent with what the, what the PA will.
Okay. Anyone else who wanted to speak to the application man?
I just personally wanted to say, Ms. Carrie.
Could you say your name first in your address?
Sure, Chris Ballblyts. My grandson is Ms. Carrie. And it's very hard to find daycares, good daycares. He has been through two public daycares with numerous children for numerous teachers. And there were issues. Ms. Carrie's a godsend. That little boy loves going, even though there's only six children in his classroom, he has thrived, he has grown. And it's very important because as his Gigi, I work, but his mommy also has to work. So Ms. Carrie is affordable, she's caring, she's loving, she would be, just like I would be with my grandson. I, I trust her with my grandson. And that means a lot when you look for a daycare. We don't have enough daycares in spring group. My children went to Small World daycare. I was lucky enough to get those kids, both my kids, into it. My daughter is not too lucky, she had to go to different daycares, two different daycares. And the, the teachers did not care, they didn't put in that extra effort for the kids. He would cry because he had to go to daycare. He would cry when she picked him up. And that's, makes you feel very guilty. He wants to go to school, he doesn't want to come home from school. He loves Mr. Rob and Ms. Carrie. And that's pretty much all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
And, and you are the person who wrote the letter dated March ten, twenty twenty-five, that we marked as an exception. Thank, thank you.
Don't question, I'm sorry, but is this a daycare or a preschool or doesn't it matter?
Uh, I listed as a preschool because, um, we do learning through play. So I know a lot of the parents would like them, you know, to be prepared for kindergarten. But one of the main things to be prepared is social emotional, so we learn a lot through play. But I did have some families here and I thought it would be nice even for them to speak on their parking issue. You know, ask them, how many have parked come at the same time? Or, you know, just to see what a drop-off's like.
Yeah, I mean, I've never.
I'm sorry, state your name.
Allison Morris. Um, I've never had an issue. Um, he's been going there, uh, for over a year now. Parking, like we said, you can get cars doubled in at the beginning, so it fits like two cars wide back. Uh, we all kind of have dropped off every like fifteen minutes, every thirty minutes, so we never really run into anybody. Like Mr. Rob said, you wouldn't even know that there are kids there. Even when I get out of my car to come pick them up, you really can't hear them. Their playground is separate from even their own personal backyard, um, so they keep it very clean. Never any issue, he loves Ms. Carrie, he loves Mr. Rob. He goes in six-thirty in the morning, ready to do his preschool work. So like she said, he went to public daycares, the ones that didn't have a five-year waitlist. The first one, he was bit over thirty times by one years old. And then the other one, he was severely neglected, so, um, Ms. Carrie has been great.
Thank you.
Amanda Albin, six oh five, Fox Valley, Florida. I was very hesitant to use any daycare, but we're a full-time working family and our grandparents could no longer take care of our children. So when she was brand new and advertised, I went and took the tour and it is beautiful. It is the cleanest, most thoughtfully put-together space for the children. They have a kitchen area that's pristine, she has a menu she sends out, there's a daily activities, there's a separate bathroom, they have, you know, a separate staircase that goes upstairs to their private living space that the children don't go to. The drop-off is very easy because everyone is staggered. The neighborhood is quiet, I feel like my car is the only one ever entering it, except for the bus stop at the very beginning. And there's plenty of space to pull right in the driveway, you get out and walk right down. A very nice path that is, never has snow or ice or anything on it. And then it's a private entrance, there's cameras, there's, it's well-lit, the backyard space is extensive. And my child is very shy and, uh, not usually a joiner and he has thrived. And I don't do a lot of schoolwork at home and he knows his alphabet, he knows sounds, so he is very prepared for kindergarten, we're actually sad he's going to kindergarten. But, so I can't speak highly enough, I think more kids would benefit and they should have the opportunity to be there.
Thank you. Anybody else, John? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. My name's Janet Hay, I live at forty fifteen Bon Avenue in York. We were blessed, she opened up right as our other daycare provider closed. And we got in ground floor. And, uh, he has just thrived, my grandson has just thrived under her tutelage. She changes the whole entire place every month based on what the theme is. She's got all different kinds of things, they come home with all different kinds of graphs and papers and stuff that they've done. He's constantly talking about Ms. Carrie and Mr. Rob and this and that and his good friends and it's, it's a service that the community really needs.
Thank you.
Ma'am, would you tell me your last name, I didn't quite get it.
Hey, H A Y.
H A Y, okay, thank you.
Any objectors here tonight? Okay. You all have any questions for us? Anything, anything else?
No, no, no further testimony, I think we've covered everything as long as we've answered your questions.
Could you tell me your loved one's name again, I didn't get it.
Ream, R E A M, Carr, C A R R, Markey, M A R K E Y. Wolshin, no, you keep going. W O L O S H I N. And Hunter.
That I can tell. Thank you.
That's a way of CGA.
I know, it's ridiculous.
Okay, um, in my opinion, I don't think we need to take action on the special exception request.
Be, before you, you ready to deliver it?
Yes.
Okay, before you do that, let me get something else on the record from Attorney Elliott.
Sure.
You, you talked about the de minimis variance. In your opinion, you believe this may qualify as a de minimis variance. And I understand why that would not, why the standards for a variance in the ordinance under twelve point six B three would not necessarily be relevant or apply if it's a de minimis. However, uh, the de minimis variance is very narrowly construed and rarely applied. Not saying it should or shouldn't be done here, but you also alluded to a second, uh, legal theory, the, based on the Hertzberg case, where dimensional variances are not subject to the heightened scrutiny for a variance that a use variance would be. So would you just elaborate a little bit more on that and, and explain why under Hertzberg, under that standard, that the specific standards for a variance again under four point six B three in the ordinance would not necessarily be relevant or apply? Normally we would go through each of those standards, so.
Right, as you indicated, these are where relevant in a, a given case. And the, obviously they talk, the, the standards include unique physical circumstances because of which there's no possibility to be developed in strict conformity. It's not been created by the, the appellant. If authorized, will not alter the essential character and if authorized, will represent the minimum variance. We've already, I think on the record, talked about D and E. We've already, I think on the record, talked about D and E. I think there's no indication that this will alter the essential character of the neighborhood or district in any way, which is, you know, the root of a variance, you know? Typically, you know, if something is not allowed, the, you know, the, the assumption is that a variance would somehow change the character or do something that, you know, shouldn't be allowed. But here, I think we've, we've determined this is such a minor change that it's not going to have any impact on the character of the neighborhood or the district. Back from the testimony here, it's going to having additional space for more children, it's going to provide a community benefit. To the contrary, we've indicated this is the minimum variance that would afford relief. Adding simply four more would be in line with what's allowed by, by, once again, state licensing requirements. There's no, you know, and the, you know, to the extent, you know, it talks about, the Hertzberg standard talks about, among other things, taking into consideration the specific characteristics of the neighborhood. And that's what we were talking about, this is at a cul-de-sac at the end of the road, it's situated in such a way that there aren't traffic concerns, you know, the kind of safety concerns that the law, that the ordinance worried about is kids crossing traffic or, you know, cars backed up into the street. Those kind of concerns are, aren't relevant here, don't exist because of the, basically the unique physical circumstances of this property, being at the end of a cul-de-sac, having a driveway with plenty of room for pickup and drop-off. There's, on the backside, there's natural buffer of woods, and any of the adjoining neighbors who would be the ones potentially affected, all have indicated they have no objection to this.
Or either you, John, or you, Jay, aware of, of whether or not our ordinance is restricted in regard to the six limit versus ten? Meaning have you represented any other townships or in, in similar matters that allow ten for accessory daycare? Or don't you know?
I don't, well, I, I think you've alluded, I believe there are, you know, every ordinance in a disability has different, I'm vaguely familiar, I think there are, are those that have a different standard and allow a larger number, consistent with what state requirements are.
Yeah, nothing comes to mind off the top of my head, but, I mean, undoubtedly, that's, that occurs. But just to follow up on what we were discussing there, under Hertzberg, of course, that addressed dimensional variances, like somebody wants to put up a ten-foot sign when the limit is eight foot, well, you know, it's just dimensional, what's the big issue? And this isn't strictly speaking dimensional, but I think your argument is, principle is the same.
And I, yeah, the principle, when you're talking about, when it's not a use variance, I think legally, it falls within that same, that same batch.
Six to ten children makes virtually no difference.
Number of children is the same as, you know, like a, you know, a setback or something where you're talking about a number. You're not talking about a change in the use, it's something about, you know, dimensions or, you know, some kind of numerical limit that's placed on it, that's not about the use, but, you know, a number instead. And I think, to your point, you know, given that the state would allow, I mean, this is more restrictive than what the state would allow, and, and that's not something that, you know, that wasn't caused by the Meeks, you know, they're not responsible in some way for, for that, that tension between what, what the state provides and what, you know, what the ordinance.
Right, right. Anything else, Jay?
No, I just wanted to get that clarified. I think that was the, the critical points to have on the record that, you know, because normally variances are very, you know, strictly considered and, and not granted very often. But, you know, the dimensional and issue and the Hertzberg standard, you know, are worth considering. Just wanted to get that on the record for, so you have something that you want.
Okay. All right, so on the subject of the special exception request, Jean and Ellen, do you have, do you feel any need for us to act on that since we already acted on it previously?
I think that's been solved, yeah.
Okay. Further discussion from you both on the variance request? Anything else? Any questions? Okay. And I would entertain a motion for action on the, for a variance request to operate an accessory daycare with a maximum of ten children.
Make that motion?
I'm, I'm in the floor to make a, make that motion.
Jean.
I will make a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Always a favor, say aye? Aye. Post? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Just, just one comment, and our, our supervisor just left, but I think we need to consider this, this adjustment to our ordinance. And we, I guess that's something you could convey to the supervisors. And I'll let you know about the other township on the way over. It's not an issue. Concluding remarks, Jay?
Obviously, given that this is an approval, well, approval of the variance request, there won't be a formal, detailed, written decision as there would be for a denial, but you'll receive an approval letter, and I can, I assume I can mail that directly to you.
Certainly.
For distribution of your mine. So, yeah, I would expect, well, I'll, I'll just go by the book, it, it, it's, there's within forty-five days of tonight, you're to receive the written decision, which in this case will be a relatively brief approval letter. I don't think it's in forty-five days, but that's what's permitted, and it doesn't look like there's any objectors. So if anyone would object to the extent where they'd want to file an appeal to this decision, they would have to do so within thirty days of the written decision being mailed, and they would have to indicate their party status tonight by giving the stenographer their name and complete address, so there's a place to send the written decision to. That's only if someone wants, is considering filing an appeal to object to this decision. That's all I have.
You're good? Okay. Any other old business or new business?
Just the minutes, the minutes from the other.
So you can press a bit together?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, public comment? Anything not involved in this case? Anyone have any public comment tonight? Anyone have any public comment? Never mind. Okay, so we're good? All right, what, your motion adjourned?
My motion re-adjourned.
I second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, thank you.